By the freedom of order, please stand to pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Please stay standing for a moment of silence. Please take your seats. Uh, there was an executive session held prior to tonight's council meeting for proclamation. Roll call, please.
Iser.
Savage.
Here.
Roche.
Here.
Barnhart.
Here.
Martina.
Is there any public comment on agenda items at this time? Is there any public comment? We did have one previous for Danielle Bronwitz because she has a meeting here at 6:30, so she had to get hers in early here. So go ahead, Danielle.
Okay, thank you. Um, my name is Danielle Bronwitz and I'm here tonight with the Susquehanna River Cleanup Project. I am going into my fifth year as a chairperson of this event. Um, and in the five years, um, to have things over, our numbers continue to grow. Our event is on April 13th this year. We usually like to have it the third Sunday of April, but that's Easter. Um, Palm Sunday, we're still, you know, have to compete with, but, um, anyway, our numbers are high. Like last year, we had over 200 volunteers. Um, we've branched out to like a strip on 405, uh, Susquehanna River. We take on 20 territories in and around Lake Augusta. It's a positive event and I want to keep rolling with it, um, kind of like the river, we branch out. Um, we're also having our fourth year with Five Star School. They do a community cleanup and I thought, well, why not get other areas in some area involved? So Randy has been with us with her Sunday school. They usually attend our event. Uh, it's a Sunday morning down at the boat launch. But with it being Palm Sunday, want to give them an opportunity and also reach out to another local church on the hill. So we're hoping on April 4th to just start small, manageable, but to have an area near Otterbine, have a community cleanup and then, I'm sorry, April 5th for the, um, for their cleanup, April 4th for the Five Star. But on April 5th, um, and have at least two extra, maybe three, um, community cleanups. So create this flyer, still have some editing to do because I have the wrong date, but, um, so we'll have a flyer and like have it posted. Uh, the QR link takes us to our, um, SRI link where we have the sign up for the river cleanup, the main event, but also hopefully have it for these mini events as well. Uh, for instance, if you're not familiar with, uh, some of our successes, last year we had collected 11,620 pounds of debris, uh, 960 pounds of metal we recycled. I think it was 3,000 pounds of tires. Um, this is all from our area. So what's nice about it is a very good, uh, do good, feel good, um, event. It doesn't matter who you are, where you come from, your beliefs, it's everyone's happy doing a good deed. So if you're interested in being part of a positive event, this is it. Um, but also if you want to help with some of our, uh, community cleanups, we're gonna try to do, keep right out for this. And I think that's all, so thank you.
Thank you, Danielle. Is there any other public comment at this time? Any other public comment at this time? All right, moving on. Um, I make the motion for approval minutes and reports, minutes from February 10th and 24th meeting, report from the fire department, chief department treasurer, controller, code office, health department, fire officer, and any provisions. Do I have a second?
Iser.
Savage.
Yes.
Roche.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, moving on, update, uh, fire chief for outdoor burning.
I just wanted to, uh, please, uh, attention, I spoke to Councilman Barnhart that, um, we've had enough of incidents with the outdoor burning within the city that, uh, is concerning, especially now with the dry year. It is, I'd actually like to see Council tonight, just to have a burn ban in, um, at least for the rest of the month. We could look back at the ordinance and try and figure out something a little different to, uh, make sure that everybody that has these outdoor burn pits and after falling the proper ordinance and that, uh, we had an incident the other day, we're a gentleman burning in the backyard, yard caught on fire, which, uh, ended up resulting in his, uh, vehicle burning up again in the yard. So we've got other incidents, uh, we had a fence down on, uh, South River Avenue that luckily, if at the time I didn't have a water can like truck, we'd, uh, probably resulted in a house fire that night. So there's been multiple incidents, uh, probably 15 to 20 years of fire departments going out for smoke investigation that, that people are not following the ordinance and that. That stuff has been transferred back to the code office and that, but I think right now with the dry advantage, I'd like to see Council to put a burn ban in at least for the rest of the month. And so, uh...
I'll make a motion to put a burn ban on for the rest of the month.
All right. So what is going to be revisited and what choices are going to be made? What happens if we don't have a resolution by the end of the year?
Well, we have a resolution.
No, I meant a resolution to, um, that's the issue.
Well, we're going to explore that and then next council meeting, I'll have something more in depth.
Any other questions for that? All right.
I, Jay, are you, uh, so typically, and I don't know if any of the fire departments can come with this, but typically it's a formalized request from all the departments. Is it all the departments you're asking on behalf of?
Uh, it's all the fire, fire, well, I'm asking for the city because we're telling for the city residents because we have issues and there's been issues with these burn pits that the department has dealt with. And right now with the dry, I mean, today, I think it's a seven or eight rough fires within the county. Um, it's just too dry right now. There's brass and that. We had that one down on, uh, High Street the other day and we're dealing with a fire burn up. So I think we should still, uh, we get some other weather here, maybe to, uh, to do that. And also I think we need to relook at the ordinance so people understand when they have these pits. I don't want to be, uh, that be counter to the recreational stuff, but I think we need to hit a better handle on. Just today, I, I was driving down that street and called the code office and they hit a stop down and, uh, I don't believe they were burning, but they were supposed to be using the pits. Something that we need to better handle, I remember the police department tells us every time, still, we have the event. So before we have an issue in somebody's house or, or that, then, uh, ditch a fire, I think we need to get, get a burn ban.
Are the incidents that you're having, are they legal burn pits according to our ordinance? Are they not legal? Are they...
Both, both, you have to accommodate the worst. I know, uh, Councilman Barnhart had an incident here, he had a burn pit on his side.
That would be not permitted.
Just with this dry season now, there's much, as many brush fires on the floor more than it's been in Georgia, dry, I can't think of one, most reasonable thing to do.
Any other questions for the chief?
Can I make a motion to add that to the agenda?
I'll second. Iser.
Yes.
Name?
Yes.
Roche. Yes. Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Uh, moving on, old business, so there's a resolution in there. We spoke about it the last couple of meetings of putting light 360 on, uh, city, city-owned devices that are outdoor supervisors and other employees during the working hours. And I also had another one in there, like I said, council have to review this if they shall choose to, but also putting tracking devices in, uh, city, city vehicles as well. Uh, Tino, it's just one of those things for accountability across the board for individuals who are driving our vehicles as well as individuals who have our city issued cell phones. Those are, I mean, Joel did create a resolution. I don't know, Joel, if you want to speak about it? Okay, go ahead.
Who's, who's monitoring, like, who's responsible for keeping track of all that?
I mean, in fact, I mean, with, back to, we, as council, we all have access to it so we can all see it. So it wouldn't be just one individual, so...
Okay, then how does it affect, like, what if we have, that we have certain employees that are 24-hour employees that also have lives?
Well, it's only, it's only during the working hour, the normal working hours of city hall or DPW because they work from 7:00 to 3:30 or 8:00 to 4:30. So it's only during the normal business working hours of city hall. It does not when, for example, I'll just shoot someone in the code office, once they're done at 4:30, it's like easy, all right, I turn off the location and that's it, then.
But someone, like DPW, can turn off the location at nighttime?
No, no, I'm saying like during the, like during their normal business working hours. So like, it's like, when you're supposed to come in, you're supposed to write on, okay, hey, I came in at 8 o'clock or 8:30 on your pay slip, when you, when you sign out for the day, you're supposed, okay, I'm done at 4:30. It's supposed to be done daily. So it's no different than signing in or checking out when you're writing on your time, on your times though. And this goes back to, you know, accountability, safety issue with our vehicles and the phones as well.
So you're kind of just using it as a time part?
No, not a time part, it's like, it's accountability. So like, for example, like when this came into place, we have supervisors say, well, if you're going to track my phone, I don't need anyone to turn it in. Or guess what, I'm not going to answer my phone anymore. Individuals who have phones have said that. Now, I mean...
Because it's just, they're feeling more proud. You're treating them like they're children and you have to track their every move.
We're not tracking their every move, it's just holding people accountable, like other, other places do this, this is nothing new that we're reinventing the wheel, like Pepsi does this, UPS does this, Coke does this, other people have tracking devices in vehicles. This is nothing new that we're reinventing, it's just going back to holding our people accountable. So when they say, hey, we don't see the code office out on the streets, John can put, oh, look, I can say, hey, this vehicle did this many hours or, I mean, she did this many miles. It's like, right now, all the police cars have tracking devices in them and things like that. So, I mean, if council doesn't think this is a good idea, it's okay, you can just vote no on it. I just think it goes back to just holding people accountable. And if they do nothing wrong, they have nothing to worry about.
I do. I believe Mr. Iser, uh, tested this, but that was already approved several years ago.
I don't remember, I mean, none of my time, I think it could have been done years before, I don't, I don't know if it has or not, but...
They're putting the vehicles.
That time was tracking vehicles, not personal, not the phones.
No, that part, no, no.
Vehicles don't bother me. What happened to Lexus, had three, four days, nobody tracked it.
It's also...
They should be separate. I, I'm trying to get cars.
Vehicles, that was approved years ago. I keep hanging out with tracks.
Oh, well, I wasn't aware of that, that must have been before I did, was here, I don't remember ever voting or deciding to do that. So that's my fault for not voting that. All right, so I guess that, so, Joel, I think we're wrong, so I mean, we don't have to vote on it, we can just go and do that, that way, okay? All right, so I guess it goes back to the, the city issued cell phones and how we wish to go about that. Any comments, anyone, or does... How was it dangerous, I'd be curious?
I'll speak later as to why it could be dangerous for any of us sitting at this table. And the written is one resolution right now, one already exists and it should be pulled and we can amend it to include only cell phones, we'll vote on that later.
I have a question, all right?
Yes. Do you remember what year, just off the hand?
I, I'm going to say five, six years ago.
I don't remember. It's nice to any vehicles, we can track them at the corner.
Yeah, I don't think you need, you don't need a license to track.
No, we don't have to do those.
Not careful, not careful.
Yeah, who needs power, because what, for the police, you don't want to be trapped in their vehicles.
No, it just goes back to...
And they don't track anybody's policy, but, you know, I think other people should have access to that.
No, it only goes back to that department, like, for example, if it'd be down at DPW, Steve would have access to that, Coral wouldn't have it at the ring, uh, Cheryl would have it for code.
I don't want vehicles to be issued.
All right, so what we can do, we can just, like, as I didn't know, there was one for vehicles, that's my fault. So how about we just table it, we'll do it, we'll bring it up at a work session at a later date. So I make the motion to table it, do I have a second?
Second. Martina.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Iser.
Savage.
Yes.
Roche. Yes. All right, uh, moving on to resolution 2025-10 inclusivity. Um, it was my fault last meeting, um, I accidentally read a rough draft for a proclamation when it should have been a, uh, resolution here, so here is the resolution. So whereas the city's summary is committed to fostering welcome, inclusive, and safe community where individuals can live, work, study, and thrive. Whereas our city recognizes the strength found in differences and contributes to all people, regardless of their race, ethnicity, nationality, origin, gender identity, sexual orientation, religious or ability. And whereas the city remains steadfast in upholding the values of mutual respect, dignity, and equal opportunity, ensuring that all local policies and practices reflect an unwavering commitment to these policy, uh, principles. Whereas the city recognizes that by working together and not against one another, other community strengths and our social fabric enriches our culture and economic and reinforces our values in justice, fairness, and all. Whereas the city acknowledges the importance in ensuring that all legal residents can fully participate in civil life, access education and local services, and engage in community institutions, develop trust relationships with safety services such as law enforcement and emergency response. But it be resolved, the city's summary does hereby reaffirm that our commitment to law-abiding yet welcoming to an inclusive community that supports the values of legal and law-abiding citizens, visitors of all backgrounds, identities, rejects any form of determination, harassment, excuse me, or migrational, that threatens that well-being of individuals lawful within our community, encourages city officials, businesses, institutions, residents to continue fostering an environment of mutual respect, equality, and opportunities, commits to ensuring that city policies and practices promote inclusivity, safety, equal access to resources for legal and law-abiding individuals, supports efforts and enables all legal and law-abiding committed members to fully participate in civil and economic life, engaging with government and public safety in the manner that builds trust and collaboration and stands as a solidarity with all who seeks to build more than just compassion side, but reinforcing summary as a place for all law-abiding people can thrive to all state laws, local and federal, including but not limited to those involving migration. The city's summary has adopted the foregoing resolution by majority vote of city council at the meeting held on March 10th, 2025. Resolution will be reported in the minutes of the city's summary. Do I have a second for the resolution?
I'll second.
Iser.
Savage.
Yes.
Roche.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Councilman Iser, go ahead, Sarah.
Yes, on the, near the ice cave rank, here a couple of weeks ago, we had a situation up there and it was all kind of wiggly up there. I just want to clarify, you think last since that council meeting, I don't spend some time with Coral, we just hear step by step. The 17 bags are actually 14 bags of the money bags for that time period, which we discussed in the past. Just want to throw a couple of invoices here of the talent sheets. Uh, on 2/1/25, there were, there was two money bags because of the fact that we have a concession stand and a admission station, and then there's another register in that. Uh, that particular day, there were $9 over. Uh, here we have a day, there were $1 over. The Torta Ron track, which runs a summer program from time to time, they have the same issues because they're dealing with youngsters, 14, 15, 16 years old running these catch kits. Here we have, there were $6 over. Here's a day, there were $10 over in the one drawer and $3.50 short on the other drawer. Here we have $2.50, $3. What I'm trying to prove is that despite the thousands of dollars of missing money laying around, money bag laying around, that wasn't true. Here we have over $5, short $10.25. A lot of times they take change from one drawer to the other and, uh, we feel that is sort of the situation, a burden of the problem. $4.50.
Management.
So forth. When we're all done, we're over $62.50 short, $23.75, which is, even though you're over, it's not good. Anytime you have a situation, I feel it isn't, or it's just, it's the youngsters coming into the county. From, I didn't talk, I don't remember any registers and taken a lot of the items and instead of, uh, $0.75 or $0.40 worth, really those penny grade items, make everything right, now I'll pay $1, about $50 to help them.
I will say, he doesn't realize that I have any...
So, all this, all these shortfall, well, actually $38.75 over. Any questions or comments? We've got a thing here.
All right. Keep moving on, Councilman Iser.
This will be a contract for a youngster, currently in Boston, for $200 a month on your contract. Joel approved it, and he's not making a motion to, uh, Josh Stein, who has been kicked out of the business of the county.
Second.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Iser.
Savage.
Yes.
Yes.
Time blocking, uh, time building, but I guess they tried to rename it to Kevin and Pam. I think we should take, I, I'll make a motion to table it and revisit it when we have integration, uh, for the IT teams to see if this is, but, so motion to table.
So that doesn't, you know, I'm thinking, I'm just trying to cast everybody on fire and, you know...
Oh, someone's actually... Roche. Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Iser.
Yes.
Uh, moving on to new business, uh, burn ban, burn, burn ban. Um, I guess, Councilman Barnhart. This is on the ban that we added to the agenda.
Right, well...
Can I just make the motion, I'll second.
Well, I, I wanted to explain it.
Oh, go ahead.
Well, that's, that, you're talking about a different thing. Yeah, there's the burn ban and then there's the amendment to this, so this, we're up here on...
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Make the motion for the burn ban.
Yeah, I made the motion until...
End the month.
End of the month, but at the next council meeting, I'll, when they were told, well...
Do it on. I will second. That's what we just had. I second.
Martina.
Iser.
Savage.
Yes.
Roche.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Now, Councilman Barnhart.
Okay, now, go on out. There is, there is an ordinance, it's chapter 53. Just want to read this one here, chenilles, outdoor fireplace, outdoor fire pit, as defined by the manufacturers of proof containers for open burning. An approved outdoor fireplace includes those commercially manufactured, devices specifically designed, intended, and advertised for the purpose of recreational fires, such as chenilles, outdoor fireplaces, and those areas specifically designed by a landscape professional and built within the confines of the deck that are constructed of stone concrete blocks or other non-combustible materials. Now, I'm going to, I want to make a motion to amend this to include, uh, in, in 53-11B, and I'm going to add, uh, the fire pits have to be commercially manufactured for said purpose. So you can't just take a wheel, get your tire, get a flat tire and take the rubber off of it, use the wheel for a fire pit. They have to be of commercial grade.
Focus a commercial tire.
I was just asking, comfortable if you had one for me.
I second the amendment.
Did today.
Martina.
Yes.
Iser.
Savage.
Yes.
Roche.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Uh, so moving on to new printers, scanners, so there were some, this kind of feeds into something here, so there's some questions, why I had the locks changed in my office earlier last week. Uh, the reason why was, uh, somebody went in there during when the office was closed, went through Jeff and Robin's desk to find some documents to send out. So that's why the locks were changed. We did limit the locks to only three people, then Councilman Iser got the key as well, so I don't know where that key is at right now. So that's why the locks were changed in the office.
You changed the locks to the city clerk's office or to your office?
The city clerk's office, correct, yes.
The city clerk goes into all five members?
That is correct, yes.
And you think that's appropriate?
Well, I thought it was when someone goes in the office during when we're not open to go through their desk to find documents to send out.
That's a personnel and disciplinary issue, it's not a lock members of council of offices that they also have materials in.
Okay, so he can get your key, so you're, so you're saying that that should be, if that did happen, that should be disciplinary action then?
I think disciplinary...
Should be, should, there should be discussion.
I think disciplinary action should be explored, but I don't think that changing a lock without the knowledge of any of us members is appropriate. I'm getting very clear in what I think is appropriate, though it's not.
I, I was, I was just saying, I just thought it was appropriate to get it changed right away, so it didn't happen again, that was my reason behind it.
And why were we not made aware of it until just now? If there were, and if there was something that was that sensitive that the lock needed changed, why did none of us know about it until just now?
Because it was Mr. Backer asked.
And wasn't my file, wasn't my social security number, who was it? What was taken out of the desk?
I went, I went in Tuesday morning because I was asked to get the proclamation that was signed the night before at a, at our last council meeting, I believe it was our last council meeting. So I was asked to provide the signed document, so I come in between 7:00 and 7:30 every day to start my day and do work. So I went into the folder that was on the desk that had all the signed documents from that previous night's council meeting, scanned that document in, put that document back into that folder that was on top of the desk, and then sent it to the individual that requested.
So was it okay for me to go into your desk, or anyone, not even me? So was it okay for anyone to go into someone else's office, to go through a folder, to find the document, and not even inform anybody of that taking place?
That's a good question, Derek. Who has keys to your office?
Uh, anybody that has access to the city clerk's office because the city clerk's office has a city administrator key, so any, and people have gone to my office to collect documents when I am not there that are prudent to the city business that need to be done when I am not present there, which I fully agree with because it allows the city business to be conducted in a timely way.
So you asked and I told you why, so that's why.
But why couldn't you have told me two weeks ago when I asked? You could have told me it had me here.
Because I think it's...
Because we could have, no, because we could have addressed it. We could have addressed it and worked on it two weeks ago when it happened.
As a personnel team.
Exactly. Why not have asked it?
So, you asked, I, the reason, so that...
And I, and I would like to clarify, I did not open any drawers, I did not go in any drawers.
But that's what you're saying, I'm not saying you did or did not.
No, you did.
No?
Yes, yes, you said...
I didn't say you went through any drawers, I said you went through the desk.
I arrived at, apparently YouTube videos, that will be up, that can actually...
Hopefully, look at the YouTube video. So did you go through his desk, did you go through the folder, yes or no?
I went through the folder, not the desk.
Okay, thank you. Then as we, as Nate said, this is a personal issue, we can discuss later when I'm here.
We should have done that before this, not before...
I didn't, I didn't even say Mr. Backer did, I didn't even say anyone did it. He, he, he came forward equally with the information.
But what I'm saying though, Josh...
Yeah, we're not having a conversation right now, right now about the discussion.
Oh, so you're the one that's on it.
No, it's council.
Nobody else.
No, I'm, I'm, okay. So you asked, I gave you the reason, so now I'm just making a motion, so Mr. Backer has his own printer and scanner if he does need it in his office to do it.
I have a, uh, question.
Yes, sir.
So when, when that office is closed, for whatever reason that, that Robin and Jeff need to go do things outside of the office, which does happen in the warmer months, especially since they're working on a lot of the cemetery thing. When the citizens, when the sign says, please see the city administrator for any help, when I need help to get, uh, anything that citizens may need in there, including event applications, to drop off things, whatever that may be, I just tell them to come back, correct?
Well, I mean, I mean, if that's what she wished to do, but I think...[1678.42]
I, I just don't have access to that office to get any of those things.
Well, I'm saying, but going back to this, councilman Iceberg revisiting the things that we're doing, cause like, for example, many things, why is that office, not saying they can't, like, going back to, what they talked about, the event stuff. It goes through three other channels till it gets to the proper channel, so I'm just using that as examples, I think we need to revisit some of the things that.
I'm just asking when they, when they need.
Well, we can, we can, we can get some copies for you, does that work?
I'm, I'm, I'll make all copies of everything.
Yeah, we can make, we can make them available, with, with things that we may need or not need, that way you can have, does that work?
But that, that's, that's fine.
Okay.
That's fine, that's fine, I just wanna make sure, and then, and anytime, any, anytime anybody needs any, uh, if, if the media ever comes to me for, if he sends some of the public liaison, if they need any contracts or anything, or time they may.
Well, do you think it's appropriate you say, hey, Jeff or Robin, where is this at, that we don't have to, if you have to go open drawers, you can say, hey?
Well, we, we, we've had that discussion previously, and, and it has been said that if I need something, get it. Because that is the city, that's the city stuff, it's self-designed. So I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, and I, I'm going through the, going through the, the drawer that would have contracts, which is the filing cabinet that is to the right of Jeff's, uh, Jeff's desk. There's a resolution folder that is up on top, that have all the resolutions that are done in ordinance, if I remember correctly. That is on top of the desk where you put folders. That would be where I would normally go if I need something, if, if Robin or, or Jeff is not there. And then, if there is a, any signed documents that, like, I did in that Tuesday after the meeting.
Went through the floor, on the desk, which is fine.
I went through, is it fine?
I don't think, you said it was fine.
I, I, I'm just asking, because if it was fine, we wouldn't be going through this whole thing.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying, why change the lock, you can, again.
I don't understand why you're arguing, you're not, it says all, for the city purposes, any.
So.
I'm just getting, I'm just trying to say something.
They asked, I, you.
I'm just trying to say something.
On a city building and didn't let anybody else know, Josh, and now you're stepping backwards, going, okay, maybe they didn't have.
I'm not saying it did, that, that, we're not having a conversation, you had your point with. Okay, so I'll just make the motion to. Okay, hold on. Oh, okay, that's. A bob with a ring, then?
Sure.
Okay, and why you made this whole bob and you got it done?
Now wait a second, you know, in your office, there's a city clerk, where Jeff operates, and we all operate, and also Robin. It's not your office, why didn't you just tell, like Lisa said, hey, I wanna change the lock, make it to discuss that, you went ahead and told us.
Did you tell us, you changed the locks up at the, up at the ring? You put a new bob on, it's exactly the situation, fine, followers of, we want to have a lock, we need, that's fine. It's okay, it's not a big deal. I, I guess I did, I apologize, I apologize, I don't get it, guys.
What's it have to do with the printer and scanner?
That way Mr. Backer has one in his office when he needs it.
So we must spend thousands of dollars to give him a printer, so he can change the lock.
Yes, that's paying citizen back here. I'm questioning why we're even having this discussion on everybody else's time. Why is this a discussion I'm down for me, instead of saying we changed the locks.
You had your moment, just poke a plum on it, you did, okay, so I'll just. So I'll just, okay, what, do I have a second? I'm also sadly gonna table the hiring of full-time officer, Tyler Herbstert, tonight, sadly, he had a prior obligation that happened at the last moment, so we're gonna table it to, to next council meeting, do I have a second? Savage, yes. Barnhart, yes. Martina. Roche's, yes. Iceberg. Um, I do wanna make a motion to update the police eligibility list, since that, um, if you also wanna keep that updated, so do I have a second to update the eligibility list? Iceberg.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Roche's. Yes. Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina. Uh, moving on, Savage.
I just wanna bring this back up for discussion, if we think going into an RFP for the IT services is necessary, or if we are comfortable with the new company's presentation.
I mean.
Oh, go ahead. I have an inclination, but I'd rather hear from the other members of the council first. I mean, I, I initially think that going to RFP for a sizable contract is the, the necessary way to go, but I mean, with the work that they've already done with our city, send their ambassadors and employees at least, what, three times just to us, let alone everything they've done with the department, I think that I feel comfortable using the professional services clause to go with this company and start the integration, that's pretty important.
I agree with you.
I agree.
So then I can, I'll make a motion to handle the RFP for IT services.
Roche's, yes. Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina. Iceberg. Savage. Yes. Uh, keep moving on, councilman.
I'll make a motion for the approval of app sharks and vouchers for the general fund in the amount of one hundred eight thousand nine hundred ninety-six dollars twenty-one cents. Liquid fuels in the amount of one hundred fourteen thousand six hundred one dollars thirty cents. Private grants in the amount of two hundred two thousand eight hundred eleven dollars and twenty-four cents, and payroll in the amount of seven sixty-nine thousand seven hundred forty-two dollars nineteen cents.
Second. Iceberg. Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Roche's. Yes. Savage. Yes. Uh, moving on to discussion topics, just wanna give council a heads up, and if they wanna put some input, uh, on the cemetery down on Second Street, so Jeff and Robin are having work, working very hard, uh, with trying to restore that cemetery, a couple of months ago, they went to Bucknell to present their idea to try to get some student in the apartment. And out of the different groups that were there, they were the ones that were chosen to have student volunteers to come, help, come down, record some of, uh, the families that are down there, where their exact lots are, as many times, uh, their family members call and say, hey, where's so-and-so located at, we don't have that information, so, but they're, the one on second. Oh, excuse me. Yeah, sorry. Yeah, now I'm saying, excuse me. So, they're trying to restore that cemetery, trying to get some of the headstones, uh, you know, standing upright again, trying to clean them up a little bit here, so that was a project that they were working on, and luckily, we got that great partnership, uh, with Bucknell, and they were very happy to, you know, volunteer at the city to take on, to help Jeff and Robin take on that project. I mean, does anyone have any?
I, I'd like to get some grants, or see what we can do about the brass, like brass nameplates, to tag one there, the ones you can't read anymore. And Jeff said there's some prestigious people buried in there, so, them, them love Jeff, so. See it?
Hey, guys, listen, back on the table, back here in the middle of the room, there's a couple of pictures. We've had about three hundred man-hours of community service into this, into the cemetery so far. Every day when you drive by, you're gonna see people scrubbing the headstones, that's the community service that, uh, the district magistrate, or district attorney, excuse me. Plus, the district magistrate has given us, for the city of Sunbury, they're giving back in that way, they're helping us re, revamp the cemetery. They're cleaning, they're resetting, and they're restoring the headstones that are broken. We're not gonna identify everybody, but there are some heavy hitters in there, I don't know if you guys know it. Uh, the first death of the Civil War, the first verified death of the Civil War is buried here in Sunbury, in that ground. Uh, General George Washington, he's not buried, but his bodyguard, when he was here in Sunbury, he's buried there in that cemetery. Now, since what we've done here is at the cemetery, I said, it's not the day we're working, what we've done at that cemetery, once we're done, we're hoping that, I mean, to keep it nice, keep it beautiful, we're gonna start, now that it's getting pretty out, we're gonna start working pretty regular down there, and like I said, you're, I'm hoping to see a bunch of people, I'll put it on our Facebook page, our website, and, and if, you guys are all welcome, everybody is, but, uh, I said, the, like, the tall ones, we're gonna get, we've gotten, we actually found, we had a well's bar, but we're calling it, about six months ago. Nineteen twenty-three, a family put together two hundred seventy-five bucks in a bank account, and since then, it's grown into like five thousand dollars to restore this man's headstone. He, he's kind of important to, to our, to Sunbury's history, to the, America's history, where we're gonna fix up his headstone and bring it back. The ones that have been dilapidated and fallen apart and beat up, we're not gonna save them all. After that, after we're done cleaning, the kids from Bucknell are gonna map it, and then we're gonna GIS, GIS pinpoint every grave, and it's gonna be on our website, that way, we're hoping that people will look at the website, see that particular grave, grandma, grandpa, great-grandpa, and, and some of the old limestone graves that we can't identify, they might know, they might be able to help us, help us identify them. There's actually headstones in that seven-third minute sleep, that's how far back seventeen hundreds, it is old. And I said, we're not gonna get them all, but we're gonna do our best, and I said, when we're done, we're gonna put the product on the city's website, everybody see it.
Any other comments on that one? All right, uh, moving on to announcements here, uh, the next day's announcement meeting will be March twenty-fourth at six thirteen. Uh, the spring cleanup tire slash TV, uh, recycling event will be March twenty-second, one, one twenty-eight Memorial Drive, from ten AM to twelve PM, uh, car and light truck tires at five dollars each, TVs are at one dollar per pound, the TV will be waived. There's only a hundred TVs that would be accepted. I do, there's. We were about sixty TVs, right, people are gonna show up without calling me, and it happened last time, I had like four hundred TVs. I, I was in a casket, I can't do it.
Why had somebody asked me if we thought they were four yet?
No, tell them to call me, tell them to call me, but I mean, if I go over a hundred a couple, I don't wanna go over four hundred, cause I'm gonna fall off. I was drowning, sir, I was drowning. So make sure you call and register for the TVs and the tires. Uh, the all-inclusive Easter egg hunt will take place April fifth, from nine to twelve PM at the Google Ho's Playground. Uh, fire police Chinese auction at the Sunbury Eagles is on thirty, excuse me, thirty-three South Third, will take place on May tenth to, from eleven AM to four PM.
Councilman Iceberg, myself, Jason Knighty, and Pat Bennett from the, uh, MA, we're meeting tomorrow to discuss the date for a free spring cleanup, so, till we get the date figured out, I, I'll let it run now.
Are you bringing that up at the meeting, or are you having a personal one?
We brought it to a meeting.
Like the date?
Any other announcements at this time? All right, is there any public comment at this time?
I, I'm sorry, I'm gonna go first, if I can.
Okay.
So, I wanna take a few moments as a councilperson to address the audience and, uh, public in general, members of this body, and, um, other candidates for public office, including the seats that we hold up here. Last week, and I think many people in the room understand this, an event occurred that's brought direct threats, false accusations, libel, slander, and horrible rhetoric against members of this council and other members of the community at large. I wanna take a minute, remind everyone, I also usually wing a speech, but I had to write it, so I nailed the tongue. I'll remind everyone in here that inciting violence against public officials is a crime, and a very serious one at that. There is private citizens in this room right now who were directly affected and whose mental health was severely jeopardized. People who are our friends and who are our neighbors, these are people, and for anyone to be okay with this is literally just abortive. If an argument cannot be convincingly made on its own merits, and we need to rely on falsehoods and disgusting acts of retribution to achieve our ends, then we're at a very dangerous place as a city, and we're at a very dangerous place as a governing body. I encourage everyone to turn the temperature down and find the truth in this, not fight at the sensationalism of the day. Understand, as members of this city, and as, um, one of your council members, there is room for public discourse, I encourage it. There is room to disagree, and there's, uh, room to navigate with us as people. There is not room for open threats or acts of violence against any one of us, and frankly, any of you in the audience over perceived disagreement. For any candidates wishing to hold a seat up here, remember, it very well could be you in a few months, if one of us is to lose, who's on the receiving end as you're trying to bring change and encouraging some of these things. For years, I've taken on corruption personally throughout the county and at the state levels. I've worked with state, local officials, overhauled policies, helped rewrite the election code for the first time since nineteen thirty-seven. I enforce strict regulations for voting in elections, and our county elections serve as a model of openness and inclusion, not only for this state, but for the country. Many of the same people in this room, and those commenting online, celebrated my work that's been done by myself and my peers, because I did not do it alone, which is important, to enhance integrity and accountability in all government processes, and I refuse to have my work, integrity, and accountability tarnished by falsehoods and lies. More importantly, I stand by these things because it's what's right for everyone in this room, not right for me to make a name for myself, but what's right for everyone in here to have a voice, even if we disagree with it. I would remind everyone, everyone here, including all members of this body up here, that we are people, and we live and work in this city, our families are here, our properties are here, our investments are here. You know, the weather's getting nice, and this is the first time as a citizen that I ever second-guessed going out to run at night by myself after this past weekend, and that's disgusting. And there's actual, I will openly say, openly and outwardly say, if there is verifiable proof of corruption, and there's actual evidence of crimes committed, crimes committed, supposed backdoor deals, my phone's always open, approach the person or message me, probably understand I'll be a little hesitant at this point to be approached in public, but no one will take on a fight of corruption or public deception faster than us, but I refuse to engage in foul rhetoric for political gain. To quote a great judge from Pottsville in a national case, "We are better than what these actions represent, and it's time we discard this into the ash heap of history." Thank you.
Will you say your name, ma'am?
Deborah Betts, and you know Josh, I'm very disappointed in you, I know this all came from you, and it was to get votes, and you should be ashamed of yourself. That man, Tim Miller, is not well, and it is obvious, everybody who's seen it, he said he had talked to you on his live video. It's not like this is a secret, Josh, you have not only put all these people that you don't wanna work with in the line of fire, including our community, cause now it's, when he was talking on his video, it's almost like what he, what he perceives as being treated badly is now like it happened yesterday. And he's obviously not okay, the gentleman that you did this with, the day before, and don't say you didn't do it, Josh, we all know he did. You caught him up, he said it in the video.
Yeah, you have no idea what our conversation even was.
Listen, we all know.
Okay.
When Nathan is being accused of corrupting, he didn't even know he did such, when he was being accused of being corrupt, he, the county owns that place, this is what takes them, the county owns it, you have keys to the county property over there? What did he bring in, what did he bring tons and tons of metals in with, Josh, his, his little truck, tons and tons of metals? I called the county, I asked them, does anybody else have keys? They said no, they're the only ones that have keys, I said, did anybody dump anything on that site? They said no.
That's bullshit.
They, they have. No, no, we're not, no, no, we're not having, we're not having an argument, no, 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 hold on, it's her time on the floor.
Okay.
I'm disappointed, because we already are perceived as an area that isn't looked at very nicely. And by doing this, I mean, he scared me, I kept getting longer, so see, I must have got the wrong page, he had a mask on, like he was Freddie Cooper or something. I don't even know who he is, but, I mean, I know Tim Miller, and I know he had an issue with community, but Jewishism is the way to go about things. Don't say you're small, so you didn't know he did, cause he had a lot to say about people that, Joe, I mean, I'm not gonna say the person's name, but he's the cornerstone of this community, the cornerstone of this community. And he's a citizen, and he was treated like trash, and he is being repeatedly threatened on the live TV, so, doesn't that upset you at all? Don't you feel like you owe the community an apology, and especially the people that, that had comments made about him? You know, I feel bad for him, but I feel bad for you too, because you, you obviously don't know any better. And you're our mayor, we're supposed to stand up and try and be like you, Josh, be better. Get these people an apology, especially the citizen in this community that didn't deserve to be treated badly, and you know who I'm talking to now. And that's all I have to say.
Any other public comment? I'm just gonna work my way back, please state your name, ma'am.
My name is Madison, um, I came here in conjunction with Tim Miller, and so, um, my personal, um, question is asking for an update from, uh, Mr. Iceberg in regards to my, um, email requests about, um, looking into provisions for, um, trash cans throughout the wards. I'm wondering if you saw them, and if you've done your work on them and think about that.
Mr. Welton, I spoke about it, and of course, they emptied the trash on all the city property. They would be so overwhelmed, I know your concerns, but if we put trash cans through the neighborhoods, well, we know what would happen, they could use it as their own personal trash cans, you know, and number two, we don't have manpower to move around and empty trash all through the city, and we hid all the city properties. Right now, with lack of manpower, any concerns of everybody dumping their trash, we have those, it actually happens now, on Marcus Street, from time to time, a lot of personal garbage, up by the, uh, ball fields, we have, especially in the summertime, people come along here to take the trash and pour our, our marlins there on site.
I, I have a bid downtown recently, I can't remember what the trash cans look like specifically in downtown, but they are the ones with the design of a small hole, right, or not?
The ones on Marcus Street, they're about the fourteen inches diameter, at the top, of course, it's like a basket on Marcus Street. But in, like, uh, around the ball fields, it's wrapped in fifty-five gallon drums, because of the size of the bags coming out of the concession stands, so, the small ones you're referring to, just won't work, you understand what I'm saying?
Well, do, do you think that working with trash cans with those small inlets would be feasible within neighborhoods?
Yes, but it's, we're back to square one, the manpower to empty it, that's our problem.
Um, if, I'm not sure what the status is of, of the manpower that you have, so I'm completely just speculating. Part of my email has stated that you, you guys do have that weekly round of picking up brush, um, and if a, a system that parallels that could be, could be taken on to collect the trash in the, in the idea that the trash collected would not require an actual trash brush. It would, it shouldn't be that excessive for like a weekly round.
I'll take it back to, uh, before Steve Welton, and see what he thinks, cause he handles that part of this. because he handles that part of this, the pickup of trash and brushes.
And I, I'm always open and available to sit in and talk with both of you guys, to, you know, kind of get through the more vague and details that have to be teased out, I mean, I would love to try to help figure out the logistics behind it, if I can.
We'll get back to you.
Okay.
I'm going to quickly work to the work.
What's that?
That's it.
Put to work, that's why I stand up, there's gonna be too much work. In, in the same zone, uh, same topic area, and, and kind of channeling back to the meetings for a burn ban, uh, this is a very overhead question for everybody, but do you, as the council, do you, have you been considering finding time to focus in on meetings for a topic along the lines of climate action plans for the entire town in regards to things like the excessive drought that we've been having, or more flooding, or the infrastructure being overwhelmed by, uh, you know, other extreme weather events, that's what you said, it's just getting more and more.
So, kind of answering that question, Madison, so with our EMA, the emergency emergency plan, it kind of goes on to covering those types of topics such as, as she said about, you know, like, I mean, obviously with that wildfire, but if there's one outside of the city coming this way, they do have plans in place, flood, like, for the flood, our SMA, flood control, they do have plans for those types of things. I mean, as of right now, like, the city doesn't have their own, we'll call it, climate plan to, to back the term, trying to reduce our carbon footprint, but, you know, we do have, like, for the natural disasters, we do have plans in place.
For barriers.
Yes, and trying to update them, you know, the newest modern ways.
Um, and another example of something to discuss, if this could be a thing on the rise of regular agenda, which I highly recommend it should be, especially since neighboring towns are already doing it, putting regulations in place, with the scorching summers that we have relentlessly been having, mirroring what I know has already been done, look to developing community air conditioning centers for people to go, um, I don't, I have no idea what power the city has over the grid that we're all connected to, and reevaluating that to avoid blackouts.
I know that the county offices do open emergency, you know, shelters when the temperatures get to be too low or too high.
The county offices?
The county UG offices specifically do that, and open to the public.
Do you know anything about the Department of Labor Office?
That's where I can do something. They're state-run, that's what I know.
Okay. So that seems to be relatively empty, all the time, there's an extra daycare as well, and within the area of the H B on A J, so, take that, alright.
Thank you, Madison. Uh, moving on, we're just gonna work my way, oh, sorry, Laura, go ahead, Laura, since you're next.
I just want to tell you, I'm not doing this for anything, I have no business in Sunbury anymore, I've been here for eighteen years, and you know something? This past weekend was the first weekend after eighteen years that I didn't want to come into the city. You destroyed us, Josh, with one telephone conversation with somebody. Tim has not been in this city for eight years, and all of a sudden he came back, he threatened a lot of people, and harming Sunbury, he had done his work just for helping the city since I owned that business. I know almost everybody in this room on this council, they have come into my place, everybody. And after this weekend, I was scared to death to come here, and now you can ask, I made a phone call to Travis, and there, I shouldn't have to be worried about coming to a city like that, because of what you did in a phone conversation, and I don't know what you told him, but had to be something, and I feel bad for him, because he needs some mental help. But I think right here and there, I think you killed your chances of being mayor, I really do. So I hope you feel good about that. You might have people here that are backing you, yes, you might, but you know something? Now, everything we're doing in this city, I don't know if people will come in anymore, we've had so much crime, we have so much stuff that has hurt people already, we're trying to build it up, that just about killed us. So I hope you feel really good, and I hope you can sleep at night, because I know a lot of these people and their families have not slept this weekend. So, I hope you feel good, and I hope you would apologize to some of these people that this has happened to, that's all.
I'm just gonna work my way back, let's go get you guys. Go ahead, ma'am, please state your name.
Hi, I'm George from, I live on Arch Street, um, this is relatively lighthearted in the follow-up of some of these comments, but I'm here along with volunteers from Save Our Susquehanna and the Planet Reality Project, who invite you all and everyone in the room to Sunbury's first Earth Day celebration on April nineteenth, it's the Saturday before Easter.
Probably the last quarter, you just called, Charlie.
And basically, what we're doing is putting together an event that celebrates our shared love of the natural world, and will acknowledge the folks who are doing good work to protect the river and the landscape that we all love. And the mayor has graciously agreed to make an Earth Day proclamation, but unfortunately has a prior commitment on that Saturday, and so we were hoping that someone else from the council would be able to attend the event and read the proclamation. Would any of you be available on Saturday, April nineteenth, between ten and two? The, the mayor has the proclamation as a draft, and I can give you copies of the draft.
We have to get back to you on that one, so people can check your schedules, but we'll try to make sure we have someone there, okay?
Okay, can I, who should I follow up with, you?
Yeah, follow up with me, with the date, and I'll send it out to the council, and I'll include you in all the email, okay?
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Where's that located?
In the back, please state your name, ma'am.
Oh, sorry, it's, it's in Cameron Park, the Earth Day Celebration Camp Park, thanks for the question.
Alright, go ahead, please state your name, ma'am.
My name's Kathy Brady, and I am not a person to stand up and talk, but I, I did not watch the video, I gotta come up on, I did not watch the video, I do not condone violence whatsoever, Randy Diner can pretend or attest to that, and I'm a nice person. And I'm a shady, like, lady, and I don't like to get up in front of people, there's lots of things to do, put me in the corner, I'm a happy girl. But, I'm not sure who the person is that I saw in the kitchen, or, um, yes. I have a video of them dumping things over at Cellitex, I have it right on my phone, there's truckloads after truckloads after truckloads, huge dump trucks that have dumped on our site. I have my kitchen window that faces Cellitex. I'm concerned as a mother, as a grandmother, because my grandkids, I'm the fourth generation that lives in this house, two other generations live in it, there's six generations of my family have lived in that house, and I'm scared, I'm a gardener, and I'm scared because I don't know what's running off of that. EPA said that there is, ninety-five percent of it is okay, but there's still a five percent that's not okay, and can cause cancer, which there's been a lot of cancer in our area, throat cancer, my ex-husband died of esophageal cancer, Sue Mensch has blood cancer, there's been cancer all over the place, my mother had cancer. So I'm concerned as a citizen of Sunbury, and as a grandma and a mother, that what, what they dumped, what they covered up, I mean, why did you guys come along, I don't know if you did it, or the county did it, but you came along and you put those ballots around the property to stop chemicals, stop whatever, runoff.
The county owns them.
Okay, well, I don't know if anybody can act, but, you know, that's, that's what I was there, what they did. I have a friend that's a horticulturist, and she said, I've never seen ground like that. I remember many times the, the stuff falling over top of me when I was outside, the blue smoke, when I'm out there cutting my grass, and I was out there laying out at one time, and the steam from that was burning my skin. So I'm concerned as a citizen, as what's going on, am I protected, am I getting hurt, are my grandkids getting hurt from being out there? So I'm here just to talk about it.
Has it recently been dumped on?
Oh yeah, absolutely, absolutely, but you know...
Do they have a camera everywhere to see what's going on?
I, I have, you don't have a camera, but I have it right here.
I would take it to the commissioner's office, because the county owns the, the Cellitex.
Yeah, I don't know who this, this Miller guy is, and I don't really care who he is, like I said, I didn't watch his video, I don't think you should be threatening anyone, but I think you should be protecting citizens that are scared to death of whatever is going on over there.
Thank you.
My husband has more, because, oh, he's not here.
There was also a guy over there, there was, and I don't know if you know about this, but there was a guy over there that was way out of his mind, jumping off the pile of dirt that he'd been there. He was jumping, and like, like Superman, falling over, I have videos of him too, just jumping off like he was Superman, tumbling down all over the pile of dirt that was out over there. We've seen many things, but we've seen many dump trucks, so you were wrong about that.
Well, thank you, I'm sorry that I said that, it didn't happen, but I did, I still stand by the fact that Jimmy has no access to that property.
Oh my, it's so like, it's a hundred dozen or not, but yeah.
Nobody says the city has access to that property, it's the county.
That's not, that's not true, because we see the city, city guys coming up with brush, and then open up the gates and go on in.
I saw, I seen that, all two days, I saw that, he dumped the dirt.
So that, that's a threat, so...
It's from, it's from the Susquehanna Avenue and Grand Street projects, if we have access.
Any other public comment? Please state your name, yeah, sir?
My name is Aaron Yolch, I live in Sunbury, down on Dawn Street, right adjacent to Cellitex, and I'm gonna double her, you and me seeing them dump stuff on there all the time. City of Sunbury has a brush pile there, that they dump stuff on there too, so if they don't have keys to that, that's why, so, their dump pile is right there, and it says City of Sunbury right on it. So, um, I don't think you have to apologize for Mr. Miller, I'm sorry if everybody's pissed off at Mr. Miller, but he did bring some things to light about that site, which I agree with, and I think it needs to be looked at more in depth, so, but, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Just gonna work our way across, please state your name, ma'am.
Anne, live on North H Street, been calling the code office since September about the apartment rental next to me. I have pictures timestamping from September till now of all the bags of garbage. I wasn't first that worried about it until I spoke to a former code officer who no longer is with the city, but I was informed come spring, I'm gonna have to worry about mice and rats in my basement. Now, who's gonna pay for that if this garbage is not taken care of? Because I see in the city code, Article Two, General Provisions 134-8, "The owner or manager shall require that each occupant shall deposit all rubbish, garbage, and other waste for rental into containers provided by the owner." It's a four-apartment house, and there's two trash cans out back. There's multiple bags of trash right now, all busted open, and the wind blows, it blows all over, everybody in H Street's gotta clean it up. I've called and complained numerous times, and all I hear from Joyce Snyder is, "I'll send a letter, I'll make a phone call." Six months later, drive up my alley after we all leave here tonight and see what all I'm talking about. Why is this still an issue when I've called the code office since September?
Will you give me the address, and I will look into it tomorrow?
It's 440 North H Street, it's property owned by Nicholas and Amanda Koveshets.
440?
Yep.
Okay.
440 front and 440 rear.
Any other public comment at this time? Please state your name, sir?
Right, so, uh, this is directed to Attorney Wees, uh, wasn't present at the last meeting, my son and I have been coming to, most of the city council meetings brought several things to light regarding the Susquehanna Avenue project, and at the last meeting, Attorney Wees, you weren't here, you had Mr. Backer read a statement, basically putting a gag order on all of city council, and all the city employees from talking to the public about Susquehanna Avenue. So my question to you is, what recourse do we have to discuss issues that are on Susquehanna Avenue if we can't come to this forum and talk to city council?
Okay, I want to be clear, I didn't put a gag order on the public, all I said was, quite honestly, I don't want the city to get sued by the contractor for anything that may have been said in a public meeting by accident, when I wasn't here. I'm not telling you, you can't speak, Mr. Swiloff, I'm not telling you anybody...
No, it's, no, it's not, I said a gag order on city council and the city employees.
Right, and that was merely to prevent any litigation, we were threatened by the contractor, my understanding, with litigation. I had to do that in order to protect the city, that's my job.
Understood, so if we still have questions, what do we do now?
Well, I can give you my phone number, I can certainly, I will help with your questions, I think anybody on council, anybody in the city would help with your questions, I'll be glad to, um, but I can't have them making statements after we've been threatened with litigation.
Okay.
I mean, that's the honesty.
So we can still come to city council in this forum with questions?
Absolutely, I can't promise you they'll be answered, because I don't know what question you're gonna ask, um, and we have to be careful of what we're saying, but I think that the more responsible thing for council at this point would be to meet with you privately and to answer any concerns you may have, where it's not going to be in the newspaper for everybody to read in the, I mean, everybody, I don't mean the public, but I'm trying to say to get us sued.
With what you say, though, in meeting in private, instead of on Mr. Bartello's recording, um, people can certainly go back on their word after they tell you something in private?
I'm not gonna tell you that can't happen, I'm a realist, um, anything can happen, sir. You asked me how best to get your questions answered, and I was being honest with you and giving you my best answer.
Good, alright, thank you.
Is there any other public comment at this time? I'm just gonna work my way up, sir. Please state your name, ma'am.
Randy Diner, um, I, I just wanna, you said about discussing certain items on a work session, could we have an agenda for the work session, and what, what you're going to speak about, one, because it was not...
There, we, I mean, there was one online, we apologized, we didn't pull it out earlier, I, I'm sorry for that, I, we didn't realize, I didn't realize, so I apologize back, but, like you said, with any of them, they have to be posted online, so it was posted online, so if it does happen again, Randy, just, hey, do we have one, we can go down, run one off.
Okay, the only other thing too was, you said about discussing certain things, and it, like you said, the new printer and scanner, um, that we could have, we had time for public comment for that, but we didn't know what that was for. We, you, you can't comment on something when all you see is a printer, scanner, you know what I'm saying? So it's hard to comment on that prior, if, if it...
We'll try to do better next time with more detail on the items, does that work?
Yes, okay, and the only other thing I want to say is, I have lived in Sunbury for forty-six years, forty-six years, and, um, I've never, I, I, I like Sunbury, I, I love Sunbury, if, if you ask any of my kids, I'm not going anywhere, so they carry me out of where I'm at in a fun box, okay? I love my community. I get really upset when there's divisiveness being caused by certain things that are set or done, and then what happened over this past weekend, and I only saw a small portion of it. But when we go from talking about Sunbury, talking about Williamsburg, talking about dumping there, and dumping out another super dump, whatever it's called, and, you know, there's something wrong with the gentleman that's saying that, and then he's threatening things, saying things that, I've lived here for forty-six years, I sure do know a lot of things that have happened in this community. I'll tell you, I, for the first time ever, I drove my car from a half block away where I live, because I thought it's gonna be dark when I go home, and I'm scared, because I'm gonna speak at this meeting, and I'm scared because if certain people heard it, what might happen? I'm scared for everybody sitting in an office position, I'm scared for employees, I'm scared for this public, if you disagree with somebody and something that they might have said. And it was very apparent on that video that he desperately needs help, desperately needs help. And I, I, I feel bad, I mean, certain people are his friends, but then he do this, and other people are his friends, but then he do that, whoa, I had to turn it off. I was away, I was in the Popehouse for the weekend, I had to turn it off because I thought, I gotta get a good night's sleep, because I have something to do tomorrow, and I'm losing an hour already, and you know what? I can't, I can't watch this kind of stuff, and I wish that we could go by the, be kind as what we tell each other to be, because it doesn't always happen like that.
Thank you, any other public comment, you worked my way back up, go ahead.
Um, is it...
Oh, please state your name, ma'am, I'm sorry.
Madison, again, um, is it too late or inappropriate to ask what everyone's talking about, because I have no idea.
I would say, I would say, don't even worry about it, at this point it's not.
So for person, for person in question, have they even had a conversation?
If, if we just can't divulge it.
The monkey guy?
I can, I can divulge it.
We're not, we're not gonna have the conversation. We're not, we're not gonna have the conversation right now. Not making like a discussion back and forth during public comment. You can discuss it later.
I mean, like, so do we know?
Well, I would like to thank the extra discovers that we have tonight, chief officers, and in fact, thank you for being here.
I guess I just put this in a, in a polite way, is this like a guy's office situation? He's the guy who tried to blow up Carlin.
You know, let's not go that far. Hey, hold on a second. Any other, any other public comment, please state your name, ma'am?
Derek, why are we dumping on that site? And what more are we dumping?
So we have permission from the county to, when we have, at our regular Susskellahan Avenue project, that there's excess dirt, we have some of that on sale. So, so, um, I actually printed out some paperwork for everybody, so there is a covenant that was done, Act 2, um, that, um, was done by D, Pennsylvania DEP, and it gives us synopsis of everything that was found and what can be built on there currently in its current state. Um, and then also I have, um, since it was mentioned about it being a superfund site, I went on EPA and looked up their superfund sites and went down to the M&amp;N's, and there is no Northumberland County superfund site, so therefore there's no Sunbury superfund site, so I printed that in from that up here. Um, and then I actually put an email that was directly from a Pennsylvania DEP individual that talks about what can be built on there, the Act 2 covenant and everything, and it's directly to me, so I also put that in here. So if anybody has any questions of that, they can take this, and I only printed out well, so if there's any more questions.
Who can the county hear concerning Sunbury? Because it sounds like when I was on that line, a lot of people were freaking out about the comments. And I remember the Celtics here, and I heard someone nauseating, and I wonder if that's been done here. I get nauseating, it's possible that that's what caused.
I'm centered, and everything everybody's saying, I do not, I can see what's said on the video, but the long and the short of it is, I think as we're sitting here and hearing these people who are concerned with their safety and their health and their family's safety and all, I think it'd be a good idea if the city had a work session and got DEP up here.
Yeah, and I think that county should be involved because they own the property, am I correct?
Well, and I think DEP is able to talk to that, because I've actually personally reviewed all of DEP stuff they did back in the day. And I can't say I've reviewed anything since there was stuff put on the site recently, but when the last, when the last tests were done, there was ground removed and then they retested. There are two places that are still hot, they are hot, on the property, there are smaller sections, but they are still hot.
Do you know where they're located?
I, I could tell you if I was.
Can you get that running and verification?
Yeah, why can't you, but I could be better than that, I think, I could feel better if it was coming directly from somebody from DEP.
I called DEP to come up and test my money.
Well, I think you could probably get them here to talk to everyone.
And then you're gonna bring the county in on it.
And they'll bring the county, they'll bring in anybody who possibly can, because if I was, I'd be concerned.
I would be too, no, I had no idea, and I apologize, I missed.
I'm sorry, I'm speaking over you, but, like, the video I have is not a dump truck, it's a regular city truck that has stuck in a white bag that they're just tossing in it, so it's not dirt residue that I have on my phone.
Well, I, I believe you.
So I still have a couple of questions. So Jimmy, do you have access to that space over there that's left? If you were getting orders at the Celtics site, something in there. Yeah, what are you dumping, just the brush or you got many metals in there? And I just have one last question, that's, that's our question. Um, is what that you were concerned about, did Derek get into?
I missed both, I just missed that door with the desk.
What is it that, what was it that was compromising the integrity of Derek?
No, no, I'm just.
Is there a camera in there?
No, there's no cameras in the office.
But you were concerned because, did you think there was porn in there? Or was it a ton of money that was stolen?
No, no, no.
Or what, what was it that was so important that you, you didn't even notify the rest of the committee?
My issue was that going through, not asking, hey, Jeff Robin, where is this at, so I can get it? Just going in, getting it, not saying, not saying one, that was my issue.
So what's in there that is that?
Well, there's different things that.
Detrimental, so he was to, I mean, he.
I'm just saying there's.
How do you call it?
City administration.
Okay, so he's.
So I'm just saying there's different things that.
My thing is, is like you hired him, he interferes, is there no trust in any of these people sitting up here? You guys don't have a working relationship, I would hope, and I just don't understand why, going in that office, as a communal office with all of you, it sparked so much aggression, you decide to check, change off the box on the doors, and then say, okay, well, you know, you're not kidding me. To me, and I hear you have this whole perspective, like, a lot of this stuff you guys are doing should be done in the hem clubs or in terms of, those are. And then when you come out, it's still okay to disagree, but you're not taking one, you know what I mean? And I just think that's a way to handle it, so that we're not all seen, and you guys are getting something you need to get, you know what I mean?
Any other public comment at this time?
Oh my god.
Oh man. Please state your name, sir, that'll work my way back around again.
My name's Robert Howe, I'm a contractor here in town.
Can I say a couple of positive things here? Jimmy can tell you, I've known, I've known Mr. Alex since nineteen seventy-four, I've known Mr. Ice since nineteen seventy-five. If you don't wanna run by yourself tonight, I can't keep up with you anymore. Gladly why my life's equal. It's not fair to them, they're great people, and Randy Buener didn't wanna get in her, had to get in her car to drive a half a block. I am not afraid to walk anywhere, I've got, what, eight, nine miles on my watch today. I'm not afraid to walk anywhere in this city at eleven o'clock at night, eleven o'clock in the morning, three o'clock in the morning. I'm not afraid to walk anywhere, I gotta tackle my freaking dog today. Does that bother me? I reported it where it needed to be reported, and we moved on from that. There is positive in this city, there's so much positive, let's get rid of this, I mean, I didn't watch what happened over the week, I'm fortunate enough, these two can remember, I'm fortunate enough to live through two police chiefs that got disgraced out of the city. Most people never see that happen once, I got to see it freaking happen twice. There's both things in this city going on, but people complain about the Cellotex site, we're doing the Cellotex site now. I fought fire on that Cellotex site, I don't know how many times, to the point they took my turnout here, DEP took my turnout here away from my whole department, because we were in the dryer, and it was something in the dryer. I'm sixty-eight years old, I lived on Edison Avenue in the seventies, I don't know how long I was there, thirteen, oh, I was fifteen. I'm pretty healthy in life, you know, could it possibly be that some people just can't do? I don't know, you know, I've had family members that just die. If there's no proof that something's happening, I want my dog to be there. I've never seen, I used any of these eyes to tell you, I used Sunbury transfer station down here to get rid of bees on the weekends, on Saturdays, between nine and noon, when it goes, so I'm on that property getting rid of rust. Now, there are a lot of good things about this city, you don't have to sit here in this guy, where's the work? I mean, this is my dog right here, you ain't doing better than this man out here, where do you look? And everybody in the city should be a dog, that's my pretty good thought.
Thank you.
And I do wanna mention, just, I know it's hard, but I do wanna mention that, like. The furniture hall, and the sidewalks were horrific, the houses were awful, I've seen a lot of them put it out in the years. I think a lot of that has to do with people in the city council that were here through that process. It's not like they just came in and you don't think, you think he's, they're trash in the place, they're not, they've done a lot of good things, and I feel like, you know, we're just, we're taking that away from what the criteria just did in the years.
Please state your name, ma'am?
Amy Buener. I think you should make a resolution to shorten these damn meetings up, doing behind closed doors businesses properly, behind closed doors, public business properly in public, and everybody in this room taking the extra twenty minutes, twice a month, that's forty minutes, and volunteering for one of your community organizations that holds wonderful events, whether it be a private non-for-profit or a public non-for-profit, let's do that.
Thank you. Any other public comment, we're gonna walk my way across, please state your name, sir?
Yeah, my, my name's Robert Howe, I'm a contractor here in town. I was just wondering, um, do I have to follow the, the codes as far as concrete work, like five foot wide and all that? Or can I just say that I'm doing it by pen dot specs and cut corners?
Bob, what are you asking?
Well, I'm asking if it's.
I couldn't hear you.
I'm asking if it's alright for me to cut corners, just, you know, as long as I say that it's going by pen dot specs, or do I actually gotta follow the codes here in town and actually have it inspected like I'm supposed to?
I don't know the answer to the question, Bob, um, and I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be a jerk, I would think you have to go by the code.
Well, that's kinda what I thought too, but apparently if you, if you say that you're going by pen dot specs, you can do whatever the hell you want.
Why do you call the contractor?
I have called the contractor.
Okay.
So Bob, can we get back with you on that question then?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I appreciate an answer, thank you.
I can show you the chapter where it's at. Okay. Any other public comment at this time? Please state your name, ma'am?
Oh, hi, Anna, um, first, I'm Carrie. Um, just like a general question, and I don't mean to be like a Debbie Downer, but, um, I've lived here for about ten years, I just noticed an increase of crime over the past couple of years, and I just wondered, is there anything in place as far as trying to decrease the crime, are we doing anything? Or are we just, um, handling it as it comes, or is there anything?
I'm just gonna direct that question over to the chief here.
So, so basically, I was gonna, I was actually gonna try to end the mood on a, on a, a little note, because, like, like I said, there, there's, there's a lot, or like you said, there's a lot of other people that are working very hard in the state. And I have, I have been here for twenty-three years, I've seen it, I've seen, I've seen Randy and she had over here at the As, and I've seen, I've seen this place grow, I've seen things come in. It doesn't matter where you live, you're gonna see crime, okay? You're gonna see crime, there's gonna be bad, there's gonna be bad things that are gonna happen from time to time. Unfortunately, you know, there's bad, there's, there's bad people, you know, and, but, you know what? The good outweigh the bad, and I will say that for, for Sunbury, um, and, and working here in twenty-three years, as, as even being, you know, the chief here, working on my second year, like, there's a lot of different things, yes, we wanna do, we wanna do crime watch. Um, I had, you know, wanna, wanna get back to the health of crime watch. Um, there's different things we had, meet the officer, getting back with that, but there's more good in Sunbury than there is bad, and, and everybody in this room knows that, but there's, there's just different agendas here, there's different agendas there. And at the end of the day, you guys all live here, my family came from here, you know, and I, you know, and I, you know, my, my grandfather's name's down here on the church, down here at the Albright Sound, you know, they were the, they were, they were the ministers, or my, my grand, very grandfather was a minister. So there's so many good things going on here. Don't let a couple of bad things that, that, you know, have taken place, again, you're gonna have bad things happen, but you know what? As Jeff has taken the project goal of community service, some, everybody messes up. And, you, you know, and I, and I, I'm trying to instill this in my team, you know, and some of my team members are in the back of the room. Just because you do something bad today doesn't mean it's bad. It, everybody messes up, you know, and unfortunately, we're called to the worst, and your question is, you know, you've seen a heightening crime. I actually have stats here, I did compiling for, since I started as chief, I'm actually seeing the stats going down. Um, and that is because city council is working with basically hiring more officers, we're gonna be hiring the eleventh officer, likely get one more. We, we have six part-time officers. There's things, but it, it takes time, and we were at one time, we were the police department of this heart, okay? And, you know, when you handle, we handle six hundred, you know, in January, I have the number of six, there's like six, over six hundred calls per month. But you only have eleven, you have eleven officers, you have to weigh that out, and you have certain big crimes and things like that, but listen, when I say we have six hundred and some calls, a lot of those calls, when people call and check and see, you know, about this person running around over here, this person running around over there, yes, we do have, we do have crime, but we're combating the festival council, the council continues to support the police department, and I would hope that, like Mr. Brown said, you, you can walk these streets safe, especially with the team that I have on right now. I, I, I back them one hundred and fifty percent, I have a great team, I can build a great team, we're gonna continue to build a great team in the police department. So, I just, in, in answer to your question, I, I believe we're combating the crime and we will continue to keep putting things into work. Um, we're gonna work with the St. Louis School District with the chief down there, um, he's, he's been a great asset to this, to, to our department as well. Um, he came in recently on this, this big incident we had just recently and helped out. You know, we, we're working together, and it's the same thing, everybody has to, at some point, we all have to work together, and there's a communication breakdown somewhere, but we need to get communications open and basically, this is a great city. You guys all live in a great city, and I'm proud to protect you so.
Any other public comment at this time?
Chief, you're working with the code department, also in tandem with you that.
I'm sorry, John, I let you off.
Any other public comment, please state your name, ma'am?
Randy Machine, as well, um, I'm just gonna piggyback on the Russian for as much as I want, but I can't.
And we know that.
What was, and I'm being a little cloud, what was your hopes in the, get contacting Miller?
So, now, okay, so this was a conversation that everyone's saying accusations, this was a conversation that we had about bringing, we'll call it, we'll call it the dosh of Sunbury, bringing someone in from the outside that, when I appointed Chief Remagen as the chief, everybody on the time of council spoke highly, very highly of that individual, saying how.
Oh.
Miller, correct, and how he was wronged due by the former mayor, that's why he was no longer employed here. So everyone always said, utmost respect for the man.
Right.
So I'm like, alright, someone who's here, there was an outsider with no ties, come here as, we'll call it the dosh, we'll call it as of Sunbury, see where Oasis is, see all the people accountable, see what's going on. That was the conversation that was held, some people may not believe that, but that's the truth, so whether.
Nobody knows that something.
Exactly, but I'm telling you, true, I mean, whether you're in here or not, that's fine, but that's your.
Did you expect, yeah, I know that?
No, I, I, no, like, what he did after that, I don't know, because people.
You felt like, damn.
Well.
I mean, yeah.
No, I, I mean, honestly, like. Well, like I said, I didn't even watch anything, people were contacting me about it, I'm just like, I don't worry about social media posts, because if we worry about social media, like, you're never gonna stop worrying. People send me stuff, I'm like, I don't care, it's social media, I call them keyboard warriors, that's what I call them, because they're the first to complain, and then when you say, hey, get involved, they never show up and do anything, so that's.
I'm just, I'm, I'm trying, you know, I need to, I'm understanding you, I'm not getting it, but, so, so we brought keyboard warriors in there?
Well, like I said, that was a conversation that I had, whatever happened after that one, after that point, I have no control if someone does on social media. And like I said, people were sending these. Yeah, trust them to do their job, they're elected, everyone has their own responsibilities in each of their departments, and however, Councilon Ice runs his, I may disagree, but it's his department, same thing with me, John, he's across the board.
So you can be an adult member, you disagree on something?
Correct, yes, I mean, I think we all do at times, we all have our own opinions, we express our opinions, whether we agree or disagree, but that's the great thing about government, if we all agree, we won't be doing our job upstairs. And if we don't, I mean, if we disagree, we just do agree, you shouldn't be up here, because if we don't bring different perspectives to this table up here, not, I mean, if we, if you expect change, it won't happen, we have to have different opinions, different perspectives, or, or different viewpoints. And like I said, going back to social media. And like, what's that, going back to social media? I don't worry what people say because until you're in the lines here, showing up to meetings, getting involved, like Amy said, hey, volunteer.
Well, nobody cares about social media and stuff. Nobody has a problem trying to drag, right?
Well, like I said, I mean, if you-
When he's just doing his job.
Yeah, if people choose to allow social media to control their lives and take it as serious or as not serious as you want, that's your choice as an individual. I'm just saying, unless you're here being involved, because as the chief said, as Amy said, get involved. There's a lot of great things happening. If you choose let social media, not, you know, saying in general, if a citizen chooses let social media overcome their life, that's their choice. But there's also, as Bill said, there's a lot of great things. Focus on the good things. Get involved. If you wanna make your community better, get involved in your community. And that was, I mean, that's, yeah.
Right. And even I am involved. My son is four, he's only, he's only one, we have one child, and I am busy. So it's not that I'm not involved, I don't come to these things, he doesn't come out of the filter.
Yeah.
And I don't come to it. So that's why I waited all the way to the end, until I cool myself down. Okay, I mean, that's, that was all I wanted. I just honestly wanted to get a manor instead of getting the red raft, but, so I guess we're all the same, nature is common.
Thank you. Any other public comment at this time? Oh, well, sorry. Jeff had one question. Sorry, this is a great, since there's so many people here tomorrow and it's supposed to be pretty out from twelve to four. If anybody wants to come down to cemetery, we're gonna be doing some elbow work down to cemetery, cleaning stones, resetting and fixing stones. Everybody's welcome, twelve to four. Alright.
George, bring more of that diet card, yeah.